Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 2. We usually start with Chairperson's report. I'm going to keep it extremely brief because we have a room full of energy and excited parents and teachers, and I love to see it. So I'm going to move along right away to our awards and recognition. And let me just say, I'm excited to be doing this again. We spent the last several weeks and months talking about the budget, and I really feel like this is a great opportunity for us to segue into some positive energies and things, the great things that we're seeing at our schools. So we are going to start off with the Connecticut Association of Schools Arts Awards. The Connecticut Association of Schools, through its Elementary Arts Recognition Festival, honors annually two outstanding students in the highest grade level of each of the elementary schools of our state who have excelled in the areas of visual or performing arts and who exhibit high levels of citizenship and cooperative skills. Ben Finkbeiner, second grade, was chosen by Ms. Katie Ransom, art teacher at Kelly Lane, to receive the Connecticut Association of Schools Elementary Arts Award in Visual Arts. And Pepper Jones, also second grade, was chosen by Ms. Nicole Lucas, music teacher, to receive the Elementary Arts Award in Performing Arts. And as a special note of recognition, both Pepper and Ben performed a violin concert with a few other second graders at the Senior Women's Breakfast today, which is super exciting.
They were fabulous.
Do we have Nicole, or do we have Pepper and Ben?
Pepper and Ben.
I love it. Excited to have them back. Thank you. Thank you for nominating our students and congratulations to their awards. Moving on to public comment. Grammy community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board. The Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member, or to discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. As is our usual practice, we invite people who are in the room to speak first. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand or enter your name into the chat so we can get you in the queue, and you're not missed. Is there anyone present that would like to make public comment? Hi. Welcome. You want to go to the podium? We can hear you better over there.
Mrs. Greer, you want to sit? Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Greer.
Hi. My name is Leona Branson. I'm a fourth-grade student at Wells Road Intermediate School, and I live five farm a lane. I came here to address three concerns I see at Wells Road School. First, picture it: you're running late, and you get to school just in time, and then you realize you forgot your water bottle. You're probably thinking, why are you starting with this? Just get it at lunch. But here's one of the problems: we can't, because there's no water to buy at lunch. There's only milk and chocolate milk. And some people, including myself, are lactose intolerant, or they have another allergy that makes them not be able to have milk. I feel there is a solution to this problem. If we were to sell bottles of water, then it would benefit the students and you. The way it would benefit the students is because the students and even the teachers would get a nice drink if they forgot their water bottle. This leads into my second reason, the way it would benefit you. The way it would benefit you is more students buying the drinks/water, and that means more money for the school. We could also put a water vending machine for kids who have their lunch period later or earlier in the day, or kids that don't have an account to buy lunch and drinks. The next problem I would like to address is the lunch. Have you noticed that there are kids with allergies that can't have any of the lunch choices because of their allergy or intolerance? So what happens to those kids when they have early mornings or they're running late and forget their lunch? I, for one, am sort of lucky, because I can at least have one option on the menu. I feel the answer to this problem is to have more allergy-friendly options and to be more careful with allergies. Talking about the menu, the last topic I wanted to talk to you about is the food options. Adults, parents, and teachers tell us to be healthy, but I've noticed that the choices on the menu aren't that healthy. For example, grilled cheese, hamburger, cheeseburger, and pizza in a way. Meatball sub and French toast are not the healthiest options. The lunch ladies also always tell us to take one or more vegetables/fruit, but people just put in the return bin, first chance they get. I believe that it is important to be healthy, no matter how much it costs. Not having a healthy diet can make us sick and make us skip school, and that means that we're learning less. I think we should have healthier options like chicken, fish, salads, etc. I hope that you will take all this into consideration, and hopefully we will have water at lunch and healthier food options. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to make public comment?
I'm chuckling because I'm waiting to see if you get hugs and standing ovation, Mike.
Probably not.
Oh, come on.
Good evening. My name is Mike Marekow, 150 Notch Road. I just wanted to start off tonight by thanking Ms. Burke for the quick response, for the call back last week. There was an issue where some teachers or TAs were telling students that if the budget didn't pass, we were going to lose after-school programs, activities, teachers would get fired. I don't believe it's the teachers' place to go talking about that with students, so I spoke to Ms. Burke about it, and I feel that that's going to be handled. The Department of Education spent $268 billion last year, with only 25% or $68 billion of that went to public schools. $78 billion went to discretionary spending: office parties, team lunches, and so on and so forth. Imagine if all $268 billion went to our schools. What we would have been able to do. This is why the DOE was shut down. Department of Education has failed every audit it has had. School lunch programs are run by the Department of Agriculture, not the DOE. Special education is protected by federal law and won't go away because of the corrupt agency, the DOE, and states already handle that. Pell Grants and FIFA aren't going away either. The DOE doesn't own scholarships. Without national standards, there's no way to keep schools accountable. These are the same people that gave us Common Core and Pick Your Own Bathroom and What Gender You Feel Like Today. We don't want to destroy education; we want to save it from people who pretend to care about children in the system while they are failing and being left behind. Lastly, Invest USA is a program to recognize and protect school resource officers. Invest USA is a nonprofit that supplies tactical vests to law enforcement and first responders. They also offer a program, Pennies for Police, that supports schools' resource officers while getting the students involved. Pennies for Police allows students to take pride in their school resource officer by bringing their pennies and coins and coin change to donate, for police to provide and present a bulletproof vest for the officer charged with protecting them. Invest USA can help you put together a Pennies for Police program in our school community. I feel this is a program we should strongly look into. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to make public comment? Going once?
Nope. We're good.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and move to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment? All right. Going once. Going twice. All right, we are moving along from public comment to our student representative reports. Sophia couldn't be with us tonight.
They haven't, little sister.
We have another sister. You want to take over? Katie?
I am very happy to report that Quarter Three has finally ended, and we are in the home stretch. Quarter Four started March 25. The juniors took the CT State SAT on March 26. At the same time, the sophomore class had the opportunity to watch Ten List, and I believe the freshmen watched The Martian. I don't really remember what I did last then. Empty Bowls was held last Friday, March 28, in the cafeteria from 5 to 8. This was a fundraiser for the Granby and Heartland Food Bank. So everybody came out and supported. We were able to raise over $3,000, which goes directly to those communities. Monday and Tuesday were modified schedules with longer advisories so that all the students could participate in the connect days, where many students presented a wide array of topics to the other students and the student body, and it was really interesting. And we also got to watch a short film called Screenagers, where we learned about the effect of our phones on our brains as developing adolescents. And spring break is April 12 to April 20, and I, for one, am excited. I bet everybody else in the room is excited too for spring break. And moving on to sports. Baseball had their first scrimmage Tuesday, April 1, and their first game against SMSA will be held Thursday, April 3. Softball also had their first scrimmage Friday, March 28 at home, and their first game will be Monday, April 7 at home. Boys Lacrosse had their first scrimmage March 28 at home, and their first game will be held Saturday, April 5. Girls Lacrosse had their first scrimmage on March 27 at home, and their first game will be April 5 at Rocky Hill. Track will have their first meet April 8 in East Windsor. Golf has their first match April 3 in Copper Hill, which is technically our home base. Tennis had their first scrimmage on Thursday, March 27, and their first game will be Saturday, April 5. Girls tennis' first scrimmage was Wednesday, April 2 against Simsbury, and their first game will be Saturday, April 5 at Thomason.
Thank you, Kay. I couldn't make it to Empty Bowls, so just to clarify, was there cold soup this year?
I have to clarify this because people always say, the Board of Education didn't do this, Board of Education didn't do that. I texted Monica, and you were there. I made a special request to make sure Monica's soup was not cold.
Supposed to be cold, everyone. It was a joke. I just didn't realize. All right. Thank you very much, Katie. Reports and discussion, I think this is what we have majority of the people in the audience here for, are schools in the spotlight?
So we are so excited to offer you schools in the spotlight. This evening, we have both Kelly Lane and Wells Road schools with you. And the next board meeting after April break, we will hear from both secondary schools, Granby Memorial Middle and High. So Mrs. Baba, I'll invite you to introduce the Kelly Lane team, and we look forward to hearing from our young learners.
All right. Well, I'm excited to introduce Mrs. Carreri and Mrs. Deemer and some of our students from second grade and kindergarten, who will be sharing about our Book Buddy program that has been happening for a couple of years now, and the longevity of it, and the experience that the kids have been having with it. So without ado, we'll move forward with Mrs. Deemer.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. We are so excited to tell you all about one of our favorite events at Kelly Lane. My name's Mrs. Deemer. I used to teach kindergarten, so this event is near and dear to my heart.
Hi, I'm Natalie Berry. I'm a current kindergarten teacher at Kelly Lane.
And we have some former kindergartners. We have Wells, who is in second grade now. We have Owen, who's in second grade, and we have Grace. And then we have Jack, who is Owen's brother, who's in first grade. And we have Sarah, who's in kindergarten. And we thought it would be fun to bring all of these kids, because all of them have participated in the Kelly Lane Book Buddies event. Right, guys? And if we could have... Oh, dear. Excuse me. So it is our third year of implementation, and we are really excited, because we've had the opportunity to grow this event. When it was our first year, we did it once at the end of the year, and this last year and this year, we've added two opportunities for members of the community to buy books, wrap them, and deliver them to Kelly Lane. Once they come to Kelly Lane, we sort the books and get them ready for the kids to open and have a grand event. So, once all the books make it to Kelly Lane, we decorate our cafeteria, we have snacks and juice ready for the kids. But the best part is Mrs. Baba does an interactive read-aloud with the kids and gets them all excited. Then they head to their seats, and they find a wrapped present just for them. Then, the best part, we do a countdown. Oh, am I going to be able to? Can you help me? Thank you.
Catherine might help.
There we go. So as you can tell, it is... I wasn't exaggerating when I said squealing and suse. I was really so excited. And so this is a great opportunity to promote early literacy and provide books to kids that they might not be exposed to. Guys, do you want to talk a little bit about the books you got and what you remember about the event?
You should step on the recycle bin.
Excellent.
This is the book I got from my Book Buddy program. I really liked the program.
Mrs. Deemer was my book friend.
He selected this one.
My favorite page on this book is this one. I don't know why, I just randomly picked it.
I didn't say they were anything.
My favorite page?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is my favorite page. It's really funny. It says, "Come back, I want to eat you." I mean, meet you.
Tell them what you remember about opening your presents.
Well, all I remember was that all my friends were so happy. They started to show me their books. This is my book I got from the Book Buddy program. And this is my favorite page. And I really liked participating in the Book Buddy program. I remember that there was a lot of noise, because everyone was really happy that they got their book that they got.
Because yours is on here.
I got this book.
But tell them the title.
It's called, "If You Laugh, I'm Starting This Book Over." My favorite page is this one, because I really like the illustrations.
So this is a direct way that our community can get involved in our schools. This is open to anybody in our community to directly contribute, and it's truly one of the most exciting events of the year. I wish, like, the video does not do justice to how much screaming and excitement there is. So after we have our celebration, we go back to our classroom, and all the kids, all the kindergartners write thank-you notes to their book buddies. We do it once in November, and then it's normally just pictures, and then by the time they do it in May, they can write sentences saying thank you, and it's super sweet. Does anyone have any questions?
This person?
Boys and girls, is there anything that makes that book a little bit different than other books you may have at home? Anything special, maybe on the inside cover?
Because mine book has joke time.
Joke time. Can you open the front of it for us?
There you go.
So each community member dedicates the book to the child and writes them a little note.
And you know what's really cool, Ms. Parsons, is that right now, about 30% of the book buddies, the adult book buddies, are from Granby Public Schools. So it's really cool when your book buddy is Principal Greer, and you don't know her yet, but when you get to Wells Road, oh my gosh, you got me that book in kindergarten. I was so specialized, don't have it. But so it's really, really sweet to see the kids. I know. Jack, or... Who got your book? Did you tell me? Oh, somebody got one from Mrs. Cookie, which is like so special. And so, you know, it's just another connection you can have with the students. So we love them. Any other questions?
Does the Board have any questions?
Well, I love all the enthusiasm. I love seeing how happy everyone is, and thank you so much for joining us today and for sharing your books with us and sharing your favorite parts of books as well. I'd love seeing it.
I just have a comment, if I could. I was new superintendent last year and didn't know really what this was about, but had the opportunity to provide a book. Luckily, Mrs. Powell helps me remember to wrap the book each time. But one of the most special things is getting to receive that thank-you card the first part of the year, and they're beautiful and mostly drawings, as you said, and then receive a thank-you card from my book buddy later in the school year and see the growth and expression from that same child. And I held on to those thank-you notes, and they're so special. So, you know, we all know that my volunteering, giving to others, it makes you feel good too, and certainly that's this experience, and it would be really awesome to have members of our community engage and more and more children could receive special books.
Absolutely. And if you're interested in doing it again, Mrs. Burke, you could scan our QR code, and we will send you a letter in the fall. I just did it. I just did it. I can't wait. We have some bookmarks that the kindergarten students made for you guys.
Well, that's lovely. A token of appreciation for my students. I'm hoping you'll help me pass them out. You do? Thank you so much. Pass them out till there's none left.
And while they're doing that, I guess I have a comment as well. Thank you for bringing a smile to all of our faces. Coincidentally enough, yesterday was like a JA event that Zenith was a part of, and something that somebody said over there, like, really resonated with me, was one of the nominees and recipients of the award said, "We can never do enough for the kids." So this is a real good refresher, following that yesterday, that this is why we do what we do, and we really can't ever do enough for the kids. Especially to the kids for coming up here and talking and sharing everything. I really applaud you all. I really applaud you all. Want to take a picture with your shirt?
Great job, you guys. Thank you.
Oh, but I didn't get a bookmark.
Oh, no.
Superintendent Burke wants a bookmark, too. Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
All right. Let's keep the fun rolling. We're going to have an opportunity now to have Wells Road School in the Spotlight. We're going to learn a little more about the Wax Museum Project, which is so special. So thank you for being here, Mr. Greer.
So we are getting ready to bring up two schools, actually, because... So we've invited a lot of people to introduce the Wax Museum Project, because that's one of the reasons that makes it really kind of special. It's a special opportunity for the fifth graders, and it's really become such a culminating, almost kind of capstone experience for our students. And you know something is good when you can get middle schoolers to come back to talk about something on their time. So we appreciate them very much. It's actually Mrs. Busby who kind of started this project back in 2021.
This is our board view. So the current EAD figures are our first.
Yeah. And it came out of what, at the time, was Genius Hour, because we were kind of playing around with the schedule and all those kinds of things, and it was just something that has grown and grown and grown. And so we're super excited. We have Mrs. Smith, our librarian. We have two fifth-grade ELA teachers, Mrs. LaPlum, Mrs. Jansen, and then, like I said, oh, Mrs. Linden's back there. Hey, Mrs. Linden also. So when I say that there are a lot of hands on deck for this project, there really are. So I'm going to get out of the way, because the kids are going to take over. Thank you for being here.
When we first walked into the library, Mrs. Busby and Mrs. Smith told us that it was time to start the Wax Museum process. I was excited, because I had seen the Wax Museum over the last two years. It was great to know that it was my turn. During the library class, the teachers talked about making sure that we did not just focus on one person. During the library class, the teachers talked about making sure that we did not just focus on one person, but think about the topic we were interested in. For example, I shouldn't just focus on Jim Henson. I should think about entertainers or puppeteers because you never know what would happen once all proposals were in. Speaking of proposals, here's Wrigley to talk about step two.
When we start writing proposals, everyone gets a paper copy to write a proposal for three people. When we are writing the proposal, we need to explain what the person achieved throughout their life and what obstacles they overcame. In addition, you also need to explain why the person is important to you. Once these proposals have been drafted, they are all typed digitally and submitted to Mrs. Busby for approval. Mrs. Busby then assigns students to famous people based on the proposals.
Next, we read a biography of the person we've been assigned. We have to read at least one book on the person from the Wells Road Library. The first time we read the book, we do not take any notes. The purpose of the first read is to gain a better understanding of who our person was as a human.
Once the book has been read, we then locate three reliable sources of our information about our person.
To do this, we are able to log into KidRex, Scholastic Go, and Epic on our Chromebooks.
One source must be a book from the library at Wells Road, but the other two can be digital.
Once we've located our sources, we begin taking notes in the graphic organizer provided to us by Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Linden.
So obviously because they haven't done the program yet, we had to gather some middle schoolers to talk a little bit about what it looks like.
We learned how to use the platform Book Creator in tech class, and then we used this in our ELA class to write a biography using the notes we took in library class. We went into Book Creator and chose a template theme that matched our famous person. Once in Book Creator, we would choose which pages we wanted to use and what our design would be. We all added in a table of contents. Our pages were able to have our writing and pictures to go along with our writing. We could also use a timeline in our book if we wanted. We made sure we use nonfiction text features in our books to make them as realistic as possible. The link shows an example of what a book looks like when it is, when it was published. Using Book Creator, we were also able to share all of our books digitally with the third and fourth grader, grade teachers and students so they could read them before coming to see our Wax Museum.
To integrate art into the Wax Museum Project, Ms. Langford, the art teacher at Wells Road, agreed to have the students create portraits of their famous person. We completed this in art class and attached them to trifolds that we used during the actual Wax Museum. In library and tech class, we made a trifold that would be behind us during the Wax Museum. On our trifold were some visual representations about our person. We had a timeline of our life with major events. A poem we wrote about them and any quotes that, that they said and that were meaningful to their missions. We also put our portrait, portraits that we made in art class on the trifold. We made sure to make it informational and as well as good. We could add pictures that we found or anything else that we thought would make our trifle stand out.
On the Wax Museum Day, we were grouped together with people who had similar interests as our famous people did. For example, there were rooms that were called Athletes, Scientists, Historical Figures, and Artists. We set up a space that included our completed trifold as well as a Chromebook to show the biography that we wrote on Book Creator. We also dressed in a costume. Then we invited third and fourth grades. When they came into our room, we would be, we would hold a pose, be really still until someone visiting our museum pushed the red button next to us. When this happened, we came to life and read a prepared speech highlighting the accomplishments of our person. Once we finished our speech, we would go back into our position until the next person came. At first, we were really nervous about remembering what to say, but we ended up having lots of practice with all the people who wanted to listen to us. After the third and fourth graders came to visit, then our parents and family members were invited in. It was a lot of people, but by the end of the day, we were pretty tired from being on stage for that. Overall, it was a really fun way to present what we had learned.
So before we officially say thank you, um, I also want to see what you have up here. So Jase, wait. Jase, Pierce, and Abby are all, uh, sixth grade middle schoolers. And then we have Wrigley and Meg and Oliver, who are our fifth grade students. So thank you very much. And now we'll take questions.
Well, I'll go ahead and, and start. Um, I think Pierce, I believe, you were Ben Franklin? Well, my son's Ben Franklin this year, so if you wanna, I could borrow that costume. Might, might save me, uh, some, some, some money. Um, thank you so much for, for sharing all this. This is like a really great project, a really great, um, uh, way to, to do research. Um, how, how did you feel about it, doing the research? Do you think it was challenging? Did you think it was easy to follow?
Wasn't that challenging?
No.
I have a question. Um, so are you able to choose whoever you would like to represent? And do you have to have backups, like another person, just in case someone else has chosen the same person?
Um, so, well, for last year, we did it where we picked three people and we, we be. What's it, you that we picked?
I don't pick. Pick one of the three choices and you'd be one of the three choices.
That's a little bit of what Oliver was talking about, like, it's important not to have just one person stuck in your head because you don't want a whole Wax Museum of, you know, Tewksbury. So like, you have to kind of think, okay, who else would be maybe an entertainer if you're interested in that kind of thing? So they kind of come up with three, then we're still giving three choices for that, and then they have to submit proposals for that.
And they ranked them so we know, like, when I get them, I see what their first choice is and their reasons lie and all that. But they know the rules of, there's no more in our Wax Museum of two of the same person than the whole museum. There's no repeats in the same classroom because no one wants to go hear seventeen presentations about Tewksbury. So.
Well, I'm. But that's what makes it. It makes it really fun though as a participant, because I've gotten to do it now and, you know, and even when there are two that are the same person and it does seem as though that was the limit, so great. Um, it's from a slightly different perspective and the creativity aspect. And I know something that I really love, that I'd love to hear how the students feel about it, is it's very interdisciplinary. So you showed us what you're doing in art, what you're doing in library media. I know you're working really hard with your classroom teachers in the ELA portion. So how does it feel to work on something, one project, but with different adults in different parts of the school? Cause that's kind of an interesting experience, I think, for a fifth grader. How does it feel? What did you like or not like about that?
I liked it. It was really fun. It's still fun because we're still working on it. We're about to start Book Creator in our ELA classes. And then we just wrapped up taking notes in media at the tech lab and library. And then I think we're starting our portraits in the eighth grade.
Yeah, I have one more question. I'm so sorry, but I, I can't wait to see it this year. Um, sixth graders, is there anything that you've learned doing the Wax Museum Project that has helped you this year in sixth grade?
Oh, I guess it probably taught us how to speak in front of people. Uh, for me, like helping note taking.
Anything for you, Ruth?
It was like cool to do like a big project. We'd never really gotten to do like, like a big project that took like that long.
Yeah, time management. Thank you.
I have a quick question for, for one of the teachers, or if it's okay, Mrs. Busby or Miss. KidRex, what's KidRex?
KidRex is the search engine that's taken purpose.
Okay.
So.
Is it available?
It's, it's linked to the media's on our website, uh, the Wells Road Media's on our website.
Okay.
So it is a, actually a source. It is a gateway to sources that are. So it doesn't count as a, as a resource. It's a, a way to get.
It's, it's a Google, but it's like a safe. Yeah, curated search. Okay, thank you. I had never heard of it before, so I appreciate the clarification.
Can each of you tell me the most surprising or interesting thing that you discovered about the person you researched?
Maybe first start with who did you research?
I researched Free Peter Ginsberg and it was really cool, like some facts about her, like, um, she failed her driving test five times.
Did she eventually get her license?
Yeah.
Uh, I was obviously Benjamin Franklin. There wasn't a lot of things that I learned because I had a lot of past knowledge about him, but I thought it was really interesting that he created the lightning rod.
Uh, for me, I was Pele, same as Phil Pierce said. I knew some of him, but what was cool to learn that he was discriminated for his race and it was nice to know that he persevered through all of that and still became one of the best soccer players of all time.
Um, I researched Serena Williams and I learned that she learned how to play tennis from her dad.
Um, I researched Nellie Bligh and I found it really cool how she went undercover to expose things about people.
Uh, I'm researching Jim Henson and I found it really fun to find different sources and different articles about him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
So just the, just a quick follow up to that, and this is more of a comment, not a question. I'm not gonna put you guys through any more questions. The same way that you all found something that you related to, you found very inspiring, I would empower all of you to take that and pay it forward, right? Like, what can you do as you grow in your life to pay it forward? So maybe one day, maybe you become a justice, somebody writes a book or does a presentation on you because you've become so inspirational. So don't give that up and just take that and just carry it forward. I'll empower you with that.
Invites when they're done to do sort of this year's date, so.
I'm not gonna do funny ears, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very.
Are there any. For Halloween last year. You were? So when I went to the Wax Museum, the girls that were tailors with. Thank you, parents, for bringing your children. It's really so important for us to hear from them directly. Thank you.
And I also say our fifth graders performed twice today's fun, fun musical.
Tomorrow.
Thank you so much for joining us, everyone. Really appreciate it.
Nobody wants to stay for the other part of shooting?
Seven. Did last year.
I'm just gonna give everyone a minute. Uh, moving along to the next point on the agenda, uh, reports and discussion, uh, FY twenty-six Board of Education budget update. Um, we did present, uh, our, our budget proposal to the Board of Finance last week, which was accepted, uh, at the three point four one percent. Um, if, uh, you are a resident, uh, you received probably today or yesterday a copy of the, the, the special edition budget issue of, uh, in the drum. Um, I highly recommend, I'm already seeing posts on Granby Living and such about this, but I highly recommend that everybody really look into what's being asked and why. Um, we spent a great deal of time, everyone, uh, uh, on this, uh, board spent a great deal of time going through, um, data, information, and saving money where we can, looking under the seat cushions, doing whatever we could to, to provide the most responsible budget that we could, considering, um, all of the significant pressures that we're going through right now. So, um, uh, there is a public hearing that'll be next, uh, April seventh. So is that next Monday?
Monday.
Monday. So next Monday, that will be at the high school, um, seven PM, I believe. Um, we welcome everyone to attend. We welcome questions during that session. It's an opportunity to really, um, see what's going on. Um, the referendum will be April twenty-first, and I believe it's gonna be from eight to eight this time here. Um, the vote will be here. And, um, again, we, we, uh, ask everyone to show up and vote. Um, it is important to use your voice. Um, so, uh, in regard to the budget, I think that's, that's all the updates I've got on, on that. Um, just to, because I am seeing comments on, on, um, uh, social media, I generally don't respond on social media. If anyone has a question, they can email me directly and I'm happy to have a conversation, uh, with you about that. So, um, other than that, um, April seventh, please join us, son. Business requiring action, um, the minutes from, uh, the March nineteenth Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move that the Granby Board of Ed approve the minutes from the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion carries. Next up, we have the second reading and approval of revised policy forty-one twelve point five slash forty-two twelve point five, security check fingerprinting criminal justice information. Jen, we, we talked about this one at the last meeting, I remember. It was the revision of some language and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 you're fine. It's just bringing us up to date with the most current practices around, um, background checks and fingerprinting for employees, uh, potential employees. And really, the important part is around how we collect, store, and destroy those records then, um, within our system. So we are currently already in compliance. Our practices are in compliance with the policy and no questions were received. So there's no changes from the first read to the second read.
Does anybody have any questions in regard to that? Do I have a motion?
Move that the Granby Board of Education adopt revised policy four-one-one-two point five slash four-two-one-two point five, security check fingerprinting criminal justice information as recommended by the Curriculum Policy Technology Communications Subcommittee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion carries. Uh, next up, uh, we have discussion of the ratification of the secretarial union contract. Superintendent Burke, do you wanna talk about this a little or you maybe just go ahead and do it?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in if necessary.
Okay, we had a discussion, or we, we met with, um, the secretarial union, um, I think three.
Three times?
Three times. Three times, um, to negotiate their contract. Um, it was a really, a very, um, uh, amenable process. Everybody, it, it really went very well. Um, and it, it was very, uh, collaborative. So ultimately, what that ends up being is a ten point eight two percent increase over three years. Um, the GWI is three point five for twenty-five, twenty-six, three point five for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then three point oh for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, there was a, uh, a slight increase in, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, um, for, um, health insurance and, uh, everything remained the same for dental at twenty-three percent. We did do some language changes to make it match up with, uh, similar language changes that were made in teachers' union contract. Um, in regard to retirement benefits, that employees hired after July first, twenty twenty-five, who retire before the age of sixty-five may remain in the group, group insurance plan until they reach the age of sixty-five with no contribution by the board. So it was just a consistent language with our other contracts. And then, um, there's sort of other very minor language cleanup and definition changes, if I recall. There are a few tweaks there. So is there any discussion there? Would anybody like to ask any questions? So is there any discussion there? Would anybody like to ask any questions um in regard to that negotiation?
I'm just curious if our salaries are in line with um secretaries in other districts. Yeah, it's a comparable salary. It's a hardworking, smaller unit, of course, so the impact to our overall budget is less, um just a small group of employees, as opposed to like the teachers' union, which is our largest membership. Um and we, it was such an amicable and um agreeable process because their position aligned with ours in a number of circumstances around cleanups of language. You know, you tend to have things that are in practice, but we want to bring that language on board. Um it's a, it's an average salary increase that is um acceptable to the board and also keeps their cost of living and and all of those appropriate measures in place. So I think it was um it's a great negotiation and provides a fair and equitable contract.
And we all know the schools couldn't run without.
No.
My goodness.
That is the truth. Thank you for saying that.
Definitely true.
So the board does need to.
We do, we do. We, I do need a motion in regard to this?
I'll move that the Granby Board of Education ratify the C S E A S E I U Local Two Thousand One Secretarial Contract effective July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Um any further discussion or questions in regard to the contract? All right, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Um committee reports, um Curriculum Policy Technology Communication met this evening.
Okay, I will be brief, so um Assistant Superintendent Parsons shared with us her monthly report. Uh in it, she talked a bit about how the Wellness Committee has met and um part of their focus is, of course, healthy foods in schools. Uh every three, three years, we must evaluate to see if we're following policy, and they are going to bid for a new contract. The committee is made up of students, staff, and parents. Um one of their main focuses is improving wellness for the community. And related to wellness, there also will be a field day on the last Friday in May with Wells Road and Granby Memorial Middle School together being held at Wells Road. Uh that sounds like a really fun event. Uh the second thing we talked about was the district leadership team met recently and discussed the recent March seventh P D Day, Professional Development Day. Um and the departments are currently assessing where their curriculum is in preparation for the curriculum review cycle. And finally, the meat of our meeting was really focused around the scheduling update, so there's a scheduling reform um after um over a year of working with a consultant and having various stakeholders be part of the committee to talk about what the pros are of our current schedule and talk about the needs for going forward. Um they, we've come up with a new schedule, and next year, the schedule will align the middle school and the high school and prioritize content-specific collaboration time. Um it'll be an eight-period day plus lunch and um rather than get into all the details, it seems like it's going to be a increasing the instruction time um by eighty-six hours a year for students, which is uh, that's the instructional time, and also students will have forty-five, on the average, forty-five minute uh per day, per class, which is a little bit of an increase over what they currently have. So increasing instructional time, which aligns, of course, with one of the superintendent's goals of increasing student achievement.
Does anybody have any questions? And I think we're gonna be talking about that in detail at another meeting.
We can if you choose.
Okay, all right, well, I know we're still.
You tell us, it's on the agenda. Um you, it is an ongoing
Right.
opportunity, and certainly we always love to share feedback with the board across um this opportunity. We deep dive at the committee level, but certainly we can share more broadly as you wish.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you. Um the approved finance minutes from February nineteenth are attached. Um we don't have a meeting in two weeks, so
We do not.
finance meeting. It'll be a spring break, um I think, as Katie is so enthusiastic about. The senior, senioritis is setting in already. Um other board-related reports, Crack Cave. Um for Cave, I attended the um Board Chair uh meeting last start, I'm losing sense of time, but I'm pretty sure it was last Thursday. Um the primary focus there was in regard to um individual town budgets. Um and normally, there's about fifteen town chairs present in the meeting, as well as um individuals from Cave. Um they're about, uh the the primary discussion was in regard to town budgets and in regard to uh federal impacts. Um uh the reduction in funds from the federal government. Um there's a whole lot of wait and see, still continuing to happen right now. So um as developments occur and I have information, I will share it when it's appropriate. Does anyone else have anything for Crack Cave? Okay, uh Granby Education Foundation.
So the G E F is still working hard getting ready for the Grand B, um which is April twenty fifth. It's actually at five thirty. It says six thirty in our events. Oh, I don't know. It just says five thirty on their um their Facebook, but they are still, there's still room for some more teams. Um I don't know if Mr. Pelling will be there in costume again, but hoping. And um yeah, lots of great sponsors, so fundraising is going well, so it's looking like it's gonna be a great event.
Excellent. Um it's always a a really fun time, so um hopefully people will continue to sign up. Um calendar for, calendar of events is attached in your packet. Um I won't go through the dates, but of course, as we start getting toward the end of the year, there's always concerts, festivals, and things happening, lots of celebrations going on. Um and then, of course, spring break. So uh do we have any board member announcements? Action items?
Oh, we're not taking the healthy management as an item.
You know, I it's not technically an agenda item, but um just real, real quickly, uh just to build on what we were discussing um in curriculum this evening, if if I may kind of backtrack to that line item. Um it was, uh issues regarding lunch and and potential healthy options was discussed in our curriculum meeting today. So this is one of those topics that cover, crosses both curriculum and finance. Um so it is something that we're gonna be exploring, especially as we're looking to entertain new uh contracts, uh a new food vendor. So uh it was definitely discussed, um and I believe uh Mr. Pelling had some opinions and thoughts in regard to this, and then?
Yeah, he did, you know, just that it seems that uh nationally, there's a lot of concern about the the food that our children are getting, and um I was listening the other day to a podcast and it said something like one out of five children in Texas are either prediabetic or diabetic, and that's sort of a national trend and you know, as compared to say, when I was a kid, where the diabetes re- rates for kids was under one percent, right? And uh so uh this might be one way we could address it, and uh maybe we should just try to look for options and really involve uh uh single item foods, right? So, you know, less processed food, more of an emphasis on uh real food.
Yeah, and I think this is one of those things that we will be exploring um in future. I what was also discussed in the meeting was balancing out what kids will actually eat. So as our uh
Yes, I forget her name.
I forgot her name too.
Silvana discussed how kids would take the fruit or take the vegetable, then they just throw it out. So there, there's a food waste issue here i- involved as well, so they, we need to find a, the right approach um to get our kids to eat healthy.
But what I did share at the committee level is that it's an opportunity for us to to take under consideration because our Finance and Operations Office with the, under the direction of Nikki Stevenson, is looking at our options, the very um controlled process. You know, we have to follow a number of of laws and and processes in order to secure our next vendor. Um however, this came to the table through uh Assistant Superintendent Parsons' report from the Wellness Committee, where we recognize those important aspects of whole foods, and we live in a farm-rich community, and so we, we had a nice little bird, bird walk um thinking about possibilities. And so certainly, there are processes that we have to follow, but we will discuss it at at the leadership team level and then bring that back um to either or both committee um as we learn more about the next steps in identifying our food vendor.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Okay, um superintendent's report.
Sure, so I just have a couple of quick, quick things. Um we had a fabulous morning, this morning. Um we had an opportunity to present to the senior women's uh breakfast um here at the Community Center. Um Jess Basket and Carmen Irons were um awesome at arranging a group of students from second grade, fifth grade, and eighth grade to really showcase the progression of the skills and um talents of our students in the Strings Program. Um it was just so wonderful to see second graders side by side to our eighth graders and hear them perform. Um it was very enjoyable. And to make it even more special, um a huge thank you to Joelle Gilbert, who is our new Family Consumer Science teacher this year. Um we had her um classes prepare baked goods and yogurt parfaits um for the women to enjoy, and there were over sixty women present, so this isn't like a small undertaking. They had dozens and dozens and dozens of really delicious baked goods. Um and all whole food and no calories included there. But um the students really did an outstanding job. We had four kids, Maeve Maroney, Claudia, Ortiz Sanchez, Hayes Horse, and Callie Lawton, um all seniors serving and and just engaging with the women. Um they even cleaned up at the end of the event. They were just awesome, um representing the outstanding kids that we have in our high school. So I love events like this where we can cross generations and have our students sharing their talents with um older generation that may not have children or grandchildren in our school district. Um and so we've really capitalized on those opportunities. I never say no to an invitation. Um and so that was really wonderful this morning. Um we already heard about Empty Bulls. Um P T O is holding a Family Books and Bingo Night on Thursday from six to seven thirty at Kelly Lane. I've pushed that out on my social media. It's also on our website. All proceeds go to support the Granby P T O, which is doing such great work. Um the fifth graders are doing the um play SpongeBob, um that is tomorrow night at six thirty. I will be there. And as you heard, they've already done a couple of performances. Um we have shown screenagers, um growing up in a digital age, to our students. Um this is also available, and we highly encourage uh parents, particularly secondary-age parents, um to come. Um we are showing this in the High School Auditorium on Tuesday, April eighth, from six to eight P M, and it's open to really anyone in the community that wishes to attend. Um there is no board meeting on April sixteenth because we are on April break, so our next regularly scheduled meeting is May seventh. Um I do want to share just a couple of additional pieces of information related to the scheduling update uh that we already went to in great detail with the um Curriculum Committee. I just brought a few copies, but this will be sent out to everyone tomorrow, including across our community. Um we have now finalized, I'm sorry, my page is short. I can give it out just in a moment. We have now finalized the um calendar for next school year. You may remember, the board has already uh adopted the F Y twenty five, twenty six school calendar. Um the board's responsibilities are start, start date, end date, are we going that hundred and eighty days, where are our vacations falling, and all of those kinds of important things. But also important is to round out the calendar with curriculum nights and open houses and parent-teacher conferences and professional learning days so that parents can appropriately plan ahead. So you now have in front of you the finalized calendar. Uh there are no major shifts from last year. Um however, there's one important change that I want to identify for everyone. Um as a result of the um scheduling work that we have been doing to align our schedules across the middle and high school campus with the goal of really, you know, maximizing student learning um and increasing um opportunities for kids, as well as instructional minutes, we have made the decision to no longer hold the late openings on Thursday mornings for high school students. Um that had become a situation that we could not work around in order to have shared schedules. So in past calendars, you would have seen an indication every Thursday that um classes start late so that teachers could have um collaborative time. We very much value collaborative time for our teachers. Um however, when one school of our four have the opportunity to have this delayed start weekly, um it creates an equity issue across the entire teachers' group. Um and it also prevented us from being able to perfectly align schedules. And so starting next school year, um there will no longer be the late start for P L C on Thursdays. Um but instead, we will look to um embed professional learning opportunities in collaboration, which is what the best professional learning really is, for our teachers across the district as a part of the day, um like we currently do. Um and so, you know, the impact to that, we understand, is that for some students, um you lose that extra sleep time on Thursday mornings, or the extra Starbucks time, or the extra hangout in the cafeteria time. Um but we do need to make hard decisions sometimes um in order to stay very focused on our goals, which are around student achievement and um keeping kids safe and engaged in the school day. Um so for those reasons, um we have done away with the P L C time. So in the past, you'd see this little star or diamond on those Thursdays, and so that is no longer there. We've also made a couple of slight changes to the professional learning time. Jen, could you save me by sharing where you've added? Because I, I know I had my notes, but I didn't bring them with me, so I apologize.
And I would also like to start by adding on and making a connection between Karen's comment and um what you were just talking about, P L C. Thirty-two of those hours that will be gained at the high school um is from that P L C. So P L C meeting, one hour a week, will result in thirty-two hours of instruction gained for each um high school student that all of our other students, K eight, currently have. Um for professional learning, we have three fall days embedded in the school year. Um we do use Election Day as a professional learning day for all of our staff so that it reduces traffic flow and we can also use our buildings for voting. Um so that day will remain. We've shifted the other two days from March and May to January and May. Um that aligns with sort of the quarter breaks and the semester break um in order to allow our teachers like really spread out nice chunks of time for professional learning that align with when they need that time. Um and so you'll see a shift from the May Day to January. Um the, in January, that uh is a Tuesday. It is on the back end of a long weekend for families, um but we will have staff here on that Tuesday. Um and then the other pieces that we've always had two early release days for professional learning, you will see an increase that has come through our Educator Development Committee and our P D E C Committee, um a request for a little bit of additional early release. So you'll see uh four early release days as opposed to the two that were in the previous calendar. And what that will allow is every month, there is an opportunity for professional learning across schools and across the district.
So there's no impact to this full calendar that the board previously approved. We're still attending school. There's no addition to the contract. There's no impact at all. Um it's just the moving of a day, moving of two days, uh because they weren't appropriately spaced out. Um and particularly the months that we know are are um more calendar days, and then also adjusting to two additional half-days. So no, no heavy impact for families, but a lot of gained professional learning time, which also maintains instructional time for our students um because we have a frankly, an uphill climb to improve some of our achievement scores. Um and this is a, one of those missing pieces that we're, we're happy to reach at this point. Is there any questions for Jen or?
I just have a comment. I think uh I like the movement because I was just looking at the calendar really quick. I know we talked about the Eid holiday. It just
Yes, it is.
if everything goes good.
Yes.
So I appreciate.
Yeah, we, we took all of that into consideration as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
If I could add one more, um the fall conferences for elementary, you will also see her about a week or two weeks earlier. We found parents were really kind of anticipating that contact with their classroom teacher. So you'll see that elementary conferences happen before the Thanksgiving um holiday uh for next year.
Thank you.
So thoughtful changes. We didn't have them ready at the first opportunity to look at the calendar because we were still gathering feedback, and the high school and middle school schedule did play a significant role this year. Going forward, that won't be the case, but this first year of rolling out that new shared bell schedule is important.
Makes sense. Any additional questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Grammy Board of Education adjourn the Board of Education meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. That one's all in seconds now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.